To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
You almost had to take over for me this Sunday or Saturday night, it's kind of how we talk.
Oh, we have faith in you, Rick.
Yeah. All right, I'd like to call you Saturday night and prepare you. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay.
First, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Approve the minutes from eleven nine, eleven thirteen, and eleven fifteen.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. General public concerns. Yeah, just state your name.
Clint Hartman. Um, had an issue arise on Saturday with a ditch cleanout. I'm standing on a farm called Landowner. None of us were aware of a ditch cleanout occurring. And I guess I'd like something to be, something put out there that landowners are aware of when there's a ditch cleanout. There was things that occurred, dirt, all parties supposedly agreed to put dirt on Eastside. It was not the case because we were not notified, didn't know what was happening until excavator was already digging. Just want to pretty much be on record as saying there needs to be some change, notifications need to be made.
Where is it at?
What's the Greenwich District?
Uh...
Eleven to five.
Eleven, yeah.
Oh, that cleanout thing.
The one that, over, the other Peterson's doing?
The one with...
The Rick?
Yeah. Um, according code, you know, they have the right to go in and fix it anytime they want. It would be more of a courtesy, uh, because I know we're not going to be able to change code. But it would be a nice courtesy call. And then if, uh, even if you would contact one of the landowners and the landowners would share the information with their neighbors would help.
Yeah, there just needs to be, there needs to be an open communication there of just letting us know. You know, we may not agree to the cleanout or the, okay, I don't want all the dirt on my side, but if I was at least notified of it, I'd tolerate it instead of, like I said earlier, not being blindsided by it. I ain't happy and want to play hardball now.
Yeah. But...
Rick's right, I mean, it's really, gets back to the contractor, more often than not, they probably do notify the landowners. Contractors being contractors are all over the place. They got there quicker than they thought they would, you know, and it may have just slipped their mind, but we will, and we've mentioned it to any engineers that we work with that they're dealing with the contractors, or we are as trustees, will mention and encourage them to contact the landowners, especially on the ditch cleanout thing.
Yeah, that would be...
It's a courtesy, like Rick said, it's not, if, this is a work order, it's not a...
Because now it kind of, I was going to take that piece back to corn next spring, but now it's, well, now I'm going to have to get the ripper back out.
Right.
I might not even be able to plant a right up next to it next year.
It's definitely duly noted that, try to get, like you said Clint, the communication better, as much ahead of time as possible, and more often than not, that usually happens. This time it did not.
Yeah.
Understandable.
And then we all know, too much communication is just right, instead of just getting, oh, yeah, they're cleaning out the ditch and I find that out after the fact.
Right, yep. We'll do what we can to get that communication to take place.
Let's talk with our contractors and see if they will try to communicate better with the landowners.
Absolutely.
But I asked you, like you say, that which, we've told you about, which side the dirt goes on, that's more up to the contractors. It's workability, some people like to swing the dirt to the right all the time because it's right-handed, some like to go left.
But it's a very good point, communication is a good thing and we'll step that up as best we can.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay.
Were you, did you have something?
Well, we're, we're all here about this hog confinement proposal going in over there by authority.
Okay.
I think that's on for Melody.
I have a ten.
Ten o'clock.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, if somebody's leaving and they want to speak now, it'd be...
Yeah, I'm going to be leaving, so, yeah, those poor people over at Thor, that's going to play hell with their life there, you know, there's enough of that stuff going on. We curtail all those confines a little bit, sucking all the water out of the ground and, uh, putting it all on top of the ground, so gotta draw a line somewhere.
Okay.
I'm just expressing displeasure with it.
All righty.
Marshall looks, we live within a mile of Norway seven, which is the proposed, and yeah, we don't want it either, same reason. Um, another thing to consider though, is the Three Rivers Trail is within a half mile of the proposed site, just for your information too.
Okay. We have a nice big packet to look at today, so...
What's that?
We have a big packet on it, everybody to look at.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Uh, Bruce, are you in charge of this CFR or Carl?
I'm on the board.
I'm in the headband.
I'm on the board.
Oh, yeah, all right. Bruce, I'd like to handle this with Michelle.
Michelle and Annie are here. Um, Michelle is the director of CFR in Fort Dodge, Webster City, uh, Ames, Boone, I don't know how many offices. We have one in Humboldt, we have one in Polkewee, we have one all over. Um, Annie is the campaign chair, so they have a little presentation. Did you guys all get yours on your email?
I saw something on that.
Yeah.
My, my, my...
You're welcome to come up and sit at your...
Have a chair up here and...
And some additional reading, oh yeah, I have a pair for you guys.
Oh, thank you.
Some happy reading as well, but we'll cover it all in the presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you guys are interested in... I got a paper. Okay. Or you have the slides next to it.
I've tried to keep them up to, somewhere up to speed as to what's going on with our monthly meetings, so hopefully they're...
And you know what, he does a pretty fair, good job on the two of us.
No, that's somebody's...
That's...
Okay, I'm just...
That's one of the reporters' uh, tapes.
Okay, maybe we, should we grab the TV? We'll just grab the computer here. The thing I didn't... We'll grab the computer and just...
I'll just do it this way, okay?
Yeah, you can...
Don't go too far.
All right, there you go.
How long have I got? Enter button.
We got one wire there.
All right, well, thank you, um, so much for allowing me to come in and present some information. I'm Michelle Dela Reba, I'm the executive director at Community and Family Resources, and I really would like to give, um, an overview of the impact that CFR has on central Iowa and invite this county to support the construction of our new central facility. For nearly fifty years, um, Community and Family Resources has been a freestanding, comprehensive substance abuse provider dedicated to serving individuals and families in central Iowa and beyond. We were formerly known as N-Car Fifth Safari. We have a long history of helping people learn healthy behaviors, preventing addictions, and achieving improved quality of life. Since nineteen sixty-eight, we have been dedicated to helping people recover from addiction and mental illness. Addiction like diabetes, um, and heart disease is preventable and treatable. At CFR, we offer education, treatment, support, and the encouragement needed to overcome addiction, which in turn helps us salvage the family unit and restore lives. With problem gambling, substance abuse, and mental illness on the rise, CFR remains steadfast in our commitment to bring exceptional care to those who need it. I have to start, um, the presentation by sharing a bit of background on whom we serve and our impact in central Iowa. In fiscal year twenty seventeen, two thousand two hundred and fifty clients were treated for addiction, three percent of those were from Humboldt County. As you can see, we primarily serve individuals in the age ranges of eighteen to sixty-four. Uh, for addiction treatment, sixty-eight percent of those treated were male and thirty-two percent are female. Since fiscal year twenty seventeen, we served one thousand three hundred and fifty clients in mental health, um, treatment programs, and one percent of those, um, were treated for mental health were from Humboldt County. Uh, fifty-seven percent were female and forty-three percent were male. Um, next I'd like to share, uh, background on specific services we offer. We offer five programs in our Fort Dodge locations, which are open to all Iowa residents. In Fort Dodge, we offer, um, crisis stabilization. That program is new, we opened it two years ago. Um, it's an adult crisis stabilization unit that's designed for individuals that are experiencing an acute mental health crisis and are in need of a safe, secure environment. The key goals of the crisis stabilization unit are to assist the individual in resolving the issues or situation that brought him or her into services, and to identify and connect the individual to support systems within their home community prior to discharge from the unit. Um, last year, we served fifty people in that crisis stabilization unit, and what was interesting is eighty-five percent of them also had a substance use disorder, um, which you will see that, um, we're starting to see, um, a trend that where people who have mental illness, uh, especially those chronic mental illnesses, also have addiction disorders. Um, detoxification services is our, um, service that really we started with in nineteen sixty-eight, so that's kind of our premier service. We are one of three freestanding detox programs in the state of Iowa, and what that means is that, um, there's only three substance abuse treatment centers that have a detox program attached. Um, the significance of that is that when folks come in for detoxification, um, then they're able to go directly into our residential programs, which is really essential, um, as a person is going through the treatment process. Oftentimes, when people are detoxed in a hospital, um, they then feel better, and so then they will not then enter into the adult residential, they'll go back home. Um, your sheriff department and police department know about these folks, uh, because oftentimes they're taking them repeatedly to treatment. Our adult residential program, um, is also located at the same site. Uh, we offer, um, programming to men and women, um, it's fifty hours of programming every single week, so it's a full-time job when a person is in adult residential treatment. Uh, treatment plans include, um, group therapy, individual counseling and education, and recreational activities help clients achieve their personal recovery goals. Uh, we really focus on family groups as well, as we know that, um, with many illnesses, um, having family involved in the recovery process is very important. Um, our adolescent residential treatment program, which is the substance abuse treatment for adolescent recovery and success, so it's a Stars program, offers several residential treatment options for adolescents and their families, ages twelve to eighteen. Uh, the youth also attend fifty hours of programming each week, um, and the children also attend, uh, school, which is on-ground, they're at our facility. The primary goal is to help the kids, um, start building healthy lifestyles and show them what sober fun looks like. We do a lot of outside community activities with these kids, um, because we really want them to learn how to connect with their community, how to give back to the community, and how to connect with healthy adults. Um, many of these kids, um, when they're coming in for treatments, um, have started using before the age of nine or ten, um, so they are in significant need, um, and we are one of three residential, um, programs for adolescents in the state of Iowa. So again, Fort Dodge, um, really, we have programs that are just not available in other areas, um, in Iowa. Our recovery house program, um, is actually two homes that we own in the community. Um, these really focus on, um, offering support to those who need longer-term care. Um, what we find is that most of the men during these programs have been through treatment several different times. Uh, we do know that substance use disorders are chronic and recurring, just like diabetes or heart disease, and oftentimes, these guys need that support, so it has a full-time case manager that helps them to find employment and keep their employment. That is a real huge goal for them, um, and then we start working on reunification with their families. Outside our central Fort Dodge locations, we have several programs offered within our eight-county catchment area, including Humboldt. So it's our outpatient substance abuse treatment, um, that's the most common service we provide in the eight-county area. There's different levels of outpatient care from one to two days a week to intensive outpatient, which is three to four days a week. Group and individual sessions are provided during that time. We have mental health, um, services, so through counseling and therapy. We help each of our clients work towards resolution. Our therapy work includes treating depression, anxiety, and self-esteem. Our psychiatry staff help clients who are struggling with bipolar disorders and schizophrenia, as well as other mental illnesses. That is located in our Fort Dodge location as well. Problem gambling is a niche program that we started about fifteen years ago. Um, it's an outpatient program as well, uh, for those who are suffering from problem gambling. And what we do find is though, that this is one of the more debilitating diseases, because people can really go through a significant amount of money when they have a problem gambling disorder. Um, when we first, when I first started working for CFR, um, I worked with a gentleman who was a farmer, and his, um, children came in, and he had their family farm, um, re-mortgaged completely. Um, it was a large family farm, so very concerned, uh, about that. And that does happen. Our professional development, um, and prevention and education program will go together. Um, this is offered through our prevention department, um, they travel throughout all eight-area counties, um, and provide prevention and education. We really, um, look at working with the school system, so we're really happy to be in the Humboldt schools this year, um, working with the young kids, because what we do find is that prevention does work. When kids are provided that education and the materials that they need, um, to know about making some choices, um, many of those kids are able to make good choices. So we're happy about that. Our twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen impact, uh, we served three thousand individuals in our treatment programs. Over thirteen thousand individuals served in our prevention. Overall, we had an eighty-three percent client satisfaction rate. We provided services to ten counties across Iowa, which is listed at the bottom. Um, our local economic impact is four point five million, which is paid out in wages, taxes, and through local vendors, and we have seventy-seven employees throughout our eight-county area. As I shared, CFR serves thousands of residents of central Iowa each year and offers essential treatment for substance abuse and mental illness. In order to continue improving our offerings and serving local residents, we are undertaking a project to create a central campus in Fort Dodge location. Currently, we have three buildings spread out across Fort Dodge, and this project will consolidate all three facilities under one roof. We are taking on this project because we are facing many challenges in our current Fort Dodge locations. One is lack of capacity. As our services have grown throughout the years, we've run out of space to support necessary program for adolescents and adults. On average, we receive fifteen to twenty referrals for our adult residential program, and it's about a thirty-day program. When you look at, um, that we can only offer services to about twenty-six individuals at a time, that means that we can save one individual each day. So we turn away a lot of folks, um, that really want to come into our residential program. Uh, we have limited accessibility. Our current adult residential building was built in nineteen thirty-eight, and it is not, um, handicapped accessible. The limited accessibilities of CFR's current facilities has made it difficult for clients with limited mobility to participate in our services.
Anybody know where the Old Mercy Hospital is?
Um, I don't know, you just don't. The guy is a pillar of our facility, the one on the top is our, um, adult residential campus, um, south seventeen, um, which is part of the Old Mercy Hospital. And then our Stars program is on the Corpus Christi campus, and it was the nuttering. So it also is not handicapped accessible. Um, we also have inadequate safety and security. When you look at these older buildings, um, it's very difficult to secure them. You guys probably have the same type of, um, situation with your facility here, um, when you have lots of doors and stairways, um, it's very difficult to know, like, who is in there and where they're at. Uh, and when you have a treatment facility, um, it's even more essential to know who's in there, where they're at. And then we have a lack of efficiency. With three separate facilities across the Fort Dodge locations, staff often have to travel back and forth, um, for meetings, um, and we really want to improve efficiencies and resource sharing by having this all under the line. So the need in Humboldt County, um, the need for a new facility in Fort Dodge is clear, but I want to share with you today why Humboldt County may want to invest in these buildings. In fiscal year twenty seventeen, CFR treated seventy-seven people from Humboldt County, which is eight, point oh eight percent of the population of the county. Of the seventy-seven individuals served, thirty-seven, um, of those programs were provided in our Fort Dodge location. Specifically, the twenty-three people came to Fort Dodge for our intensive outpatient program, six, um, came over for mental health treatment, four came for the residential treatment program, which is the adult program, three for our detoxification program, and one for crisis stabilization. CFR's location is the closest residential recovery program for Humboldt residents by fifty miles. So if you look at, um, how far they would have to travel if this program was not in existence, um, they would be traveling up to Mason City or down to, um, Des Moines. Those would be the lowest, the closest facilities for you. Uh, by having treatment programs within thirty minutes of your home, many benefits are afforded to clients. One is family involvement. Um, family involvement is critical to a client's recovery. Um, having those family members come in for family sessions and family groups, um, is essential. It's important for families to know what they need to do, um, and what kind of, um, support they can offer to their loved ones when they're going through these treatment programs. Um, it's also a short commute to make it convenient for families to be able to come, become part of the process, um, as well as for those who need those IOP services. At our residential treatment facility, um, clients create relationships with the local recovery community through AA and NA. Uh, Fort Dodge has a very strong AA and NA community, and after the clients graduate treatment and return home, they may wish to continue to go to those meetings. So by having it so close, um, they're able to continue with that aftercare, um, by making regular trips to Fort Dodge. Um, those two factors can deeply impact the recovery of clients and their ability to remain sober in the future. Um, so what you do find is when a person returns to their home environment, if they do not have a support system, it's very easy for them to start, then, um, I guess, I, we call it playing in their old playgrounds, so, you know, hanging out with their old friends, um, and going to their own haunting grounds. So it's very easy for them to start taking the lesson again. In addition, um, despite only seventy-seven Humboldt County residents needing CFR services in twenty seventeen, on average, one in five individuals are diagnosed with a mental illness and one in ten individuals are diagnosed with a substance use disorder every single year. There is always a strong need to have outpatient and residential programs available for residents. Since Humboldt County is included in CFR's eight-county catchment area, Humboldt residents receive priority admission to residential programming. This means that residents of Humboldt County and any of CFR's state other counties, um, catchment area may be able to start treatment sooner, so they can begin their recovery and return to their family. CFR's Fort Dodge residential services are undoubtedly needed and utilized by Humboldt County residents, and our new facility will help to ensure that we continue to be a great resource for your community. So our centralized campus in Fort Dodge, as we look, um, toward our future and our new building, we're excited about the services and improved treatment environment we will be able to provide to the clients. To help us bring to life this new facility, we've engaged Ask Studio out of Des Moines and Woodruff Construction out of Fort Dodge. CFR has purchased the site for construction, has, and actually, we began our new construction about two weeks ago. Um, the new building is located right off of Highway one sixty-nine, across from Iowa Central, um, right next to Youth Shelter Care, so, also by Tom Thumb, people if I say Tom Thumb, we're by Tom Thumb. Um, with the new facility, we look forward to having a building that is, has an elevator with access, um, so that it's accessible to visitors of all mobility, um, supporting a larger capacity for adolescent and residential programs. We will have seventeen more beds at the facility, um, so we expect to be able to increase our capacity by over two hundred individuals each year. Um, improving efficiency for our operations and saving money and time for having all Fort Dodge offices under one roof, providing a safe and inviting place of refuge and recovery with a central monitoring system, and more security for each entrance, having a central campus that is fully owned, as a not-for-profit, um, having a campus that is fully owned is essential. When you continue to rent, um, which we do in two of our locations, there's always that possibility, um, that you're not going to be able to continue renting in those places because not-for-profits typically, um, our rent is lower because landlord does know that we're not-for-profit, but if they have a business that comes into town that's willing to offer more rent, um, we've had that happen where we've been asked to vacate, and that's, you know, that is how businesses are run. So having something that's fully our own is essential to ensuring that we're able to continue to offer these services. Um, and then we'll be able to continue to serve Humboldt residents in a new and more comfortable recovery environment. So there are also some savings to the county. With the new facility, we'll be able to continue offering essential services to Humboldt County residents and be able to save more clients every year. By providing these vital treatment programs in the community, Humboldt County may be able to have a significant, um, savings. Specifically, recovery treatment in Humboldt County can lead to a decline in incarceration and recidivism rates of individuals involved with drug-related crimes. Um, in fiscal year twenty sixteen, Iowa recorded a thirty-four percent return to prison rate, further the return rate of inmates charged with drug-related crimes was thirty-six percent. On average, the cost of housing an inmate in an Iowa prison is eighty-six dollars and thirty-five cents a day, or thirty-one thousand five hundred and seventeen per year. On the other hand, CFR's average cost per year for substance abuse treatment is one thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars per client. Um, as a safety net and not-for-profit resource, we provide, um, services that are very cost-effective and efficient. Um, by treating individuals with substance use disorders, CFR can help the county save thousands of dollars each year for each person who is not rearrested. CFR's intensive treatment and counseling gives individuals an opportunity to heal and to address the root cause of drug-related crimes. As a result, we arrest and reincarnation rate also should drop. Uh, our recovery house program is one of those that is really essential to that process. Most of the men that are in the program have been to prison. Um, we really, um, do a fabulous job with reintegrating those folks into the community and ensuring that they have jobs, um, which then of course pays taxes back, you know, to the community. Overall, our building cost is six point six million. We have a goal of raising two million through this current campaign. The balance of the six point six million dollar projects will be funded by bank financing and by Community and Family Resources. So our request for support, as I said earlier, we have embarked on a campaign to raise at least two million. Our campaign is now at full swing, and CFR is approaching each of the eight counties in our catchment area to consider a contribution to the campaign. We have determined gift request amounts based on population. In light of what we hope to accomplish, we're asking Humboldt County to consider contributing four thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars each year for five years, for a total gift of twenty-three thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars to support the project. A gift from Humboldt County would allow us to boost our fundraising total and would put us on the path to reaching a hundred percent participation from our CFR catchment area. Most importantly, your support would help us fund this important facility in our central Iowa region. I know we've given this board a lot of information to think about, and we would like to thank you for considering our request, and I will take any questions that you may have.
Well, Bruce has done a very good job in keeping us up to date in the whole process of your ability, the need that you have, he's done a very good job on that. And, uh, obviously, from the numbers, it shows you do save a lot of money in the long... And obviously, from the numbers, it shows you do save a lot of money in the long term if you keep people from re-offending and things like that.
I think the other part of the whole puzzle is, it's the ugly part of life that we, they deal with, and I say "they," you know, if people that are, have substance or any issues, I don't remember what the numbers were, but when they call and they're looking and there isn't available bed space, the ability for them to just say, "Well, we'll do it next week, we'll do it next month," as they continue to use, as they continue to cause problems in families and whatnot. For something that's less than 20 miles away, and we hear from Dean, our police department, that they've sat out at our hospital with someone looking for a bed, someone, and it's costing us, and it's costing... I joke with them, I told them when, I remember the last time the Powerball was like 400 and some million, I said, "I got a lucky ticket, so when I win, I'm gonna write the check for $6 million." Well, we haven't got that check, so I wish we could, we had that big pot of money that we weren't out soliciting funds from every county, but it's, like I said, the ugly part of life. They do an awesome job, the numbers that they show monthly, we sit and listen to, "Well, our staff is doing this, this, and this," and then we aren't doing so well on this, this, and this, and we're gonna improve. And next month, when she brings the numbers back, she usually has ruled with an iron fist, and they do improve. So we, I've seen, and Jerry was on this board before, so he was very involved in it, and I'm a believer because we've had family that have used it. So I guess I would encourage, and anybody in tours, to have the ability to go look, because when you walk in and you think, "My God, they're using this building," it's not good.
Of course, the whole perilous what it looks like.
I mean, it's really sad to think that they're putting people through this and trying to, you know, change their whole view of life, and it's god awful.
It's definitely in need of improvement.
Yeah.
They have stretched the life of that building to the max, and I think when the hospital walked away from it 50 years ago, or whenever it was, it was to the end of its life then, and they've gotten, it's like a car that you keep thinking, "I gotta put tires on it," but we just keep driving it and thinking, "Yeah, it's gonna make it one more trip." So that's my view.
I believe the request, long story short, per the presentation and everything, would be money well spent, and it'd be a good investment. So a nice presentation, too, to tie it into that, yes, to help these people and get them back on track is a good investment, not only for their life, but for the, you know, rest of us and for the community at large. So I think that's very reasonable, and we'll certainly take it into consideration when we're doing our budgets. Absolutely.
And I'm sure you are taking private donations, too, aren't you?
We are.
So when you go by Tom Thumb and you see all the big dirt pile, just take a little detour and drive up there and see how, 'cause I can't see now, I have to drive up there and snooze.
Yeah.
I haven't been there since.
The sun has changed, it's different parking.
But it'll be, and the project completion would be when?
It should be by March or April of 2019.
Wow.
Wow, really, 18 months, huh?
Yep.
And the other part of this is, you know, Woodruff is the general, but they're gonna have to subcontract, so there's gonna be all kinds of subcontracting, and some of our people in Humboldt area are probably gonna get dragged into helping, so it'll be a boost for them, too, so.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we can have a motion going to drainage.
So move drainage.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're in drainage. Just whatever, drainage.
Nathan, if you want, you want, I have several copies, so you're welcome to keep.
I got one, two cans, if you want this one.
Yeah.
Yes, I get that one.
We'll give you something to do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nice presentation, Bruce, very good.
This is, this side's court?
I'll get through this 12 times.
I'll get through that 12 times.
Oh, we're ready for you.
I thought I saw it here a minute ago.
She wanted to see, to the executive seal, and she's done a great job. Comes from bad shape to great shape.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
I know it. Let me give you some news.
Rick?
Yeah.
Give that to Rick, he's ill.
Yeah, voice is really bad, I'm sorry.
Bruce, will you have some, please? There you go. Thank you, sir.
Give me two sheets, and I'll just tell you what we're doing here before we get into it. The one with the aerial photograph on it shows you where the 13 egg drainage wells were that got closed. The other one, we have, we apply a reduction factor if you're some distance away from the county system. In other words, it takes you some money to spend to get there, so you go reduction factor. This one, at the top, there's also reductions. The nave property is so close to the outlet, we made major reductions for that. You can see the dark blue at the top is a 50%. Now, do you, does everybody have the copy of the, with dollar amounts?
No, I don't have to dig for it.
Well, I got probably some wire, but I don't have a wire.
I've got a lot of those, and I'll...
I got some that I can turn back in for credit.
Yeah. Who needs copies of the assessments? I think we got plenty here at our lab. Okay, I'm just gonna give you a real quick summary on how we approach these. We rely heavily on soils because soils cover several factors with the ground. There was 15 different soils in this watershed. Six of those are considered prime farmland. Some of those say prime farmland if drained, and we had three soils that met that category. So what you see in front of you with the numbers on it is the end result of that. So Webster is a good example of a soil. We have it at 80 points per acre because it's considered prime farmland if drained. The Soil Survey Book even says that in it, if drained. So this system provides the drainage. So we use the soil categories with the points per acre, and that was our main starting point. And then the drawing with the yellow on it is the one that shows the reductions for proximity. Two adjustments. For example, the nave property at the north end, one of those pieces got a 50% reduction, next one just south, 40%, and then the one further away from the outlet got a 15%. And then the rest of the colors you can see around there are based on their distance from the county drainage system. There are different approaches to this work. The code is very limited in guidelines. Basically, the land getting the most benefit gets 100 points per acre, and then you step that down based on lesser benefit. I didn't look at lows and highs on here as far as average per acre. The good thing about this project is that it was basically three fourths paid for by the state grant to close the 13 egg wells. What's that?
Is the quarry included on this, too, though?
Section 30, is it? No, it is right here.
What page is that, Rick?
The third.
Third?
Yeah, the third page, yeah. About three fourths down.
So there's some towards the top, too.
Rick, this is not meant to be a technical question. With the different soil classifications that we have in our county, and there's many, but one is predominant, it's called Canisfield's bond.
Yes.
And just thought, and like I said, I don't mean to drag this into a technical question, but you said something about Webster being highly suitable if drained. I suspect Canisfield would have a similar designation.
Yes, Canisfield, soil number 507. Yeah, we have it at the same points.
As Webster?
As Webster.
Because it's a very predominant soil type in Humboldt County.
Yes.
And I don't know if the soil surveys there years, years ago, or more recent years ago lumped a lot of stuff together, but it does seem to be a huge percentage of our soils.
Yes.
It can vary, and I'm not a soil scientist, but I know it can vary dramatically in pH content for farmability, and it can vary dramatically in drainage.
Yes.
Because it's such a large portion of our...
Yes, and that's part of why Humboldt County is such, considered such good farmland because it's in the Soil Survey Book as a prime piece of farmland where drained.
Right.
So that's where the drainage is such a big benefit. Canisfield and Webster would be shoe soils where the drainage is critical to make it prime.
Canisfield probably more so because of the structure and the type, but, so, more so to what's your explanation, but soil types and ability for production and that, that's just a part of the reclassification.
Yes, big part of it because the soils indicate, give some idea of location, slope, crop suitability, yeah, what use it's best for. For example, the Soil Survey Book has, when it gives a description of the soil, it says excellent for row crop in it, so.
Well, it's a pretty big percentage when you deal with what we're looking at.
Yes.
Reclassification.
Yes.
And then you did a nice job of explaining proximity and benefit.
Yes, that all is coming into account.
Just wanted to, like I said, that's enough discussion on soil types.
Well, the, part of this project was very deep. For example, on the nave property part of that was deep. We did put a riser in there to connect to, to help access, accessibility to the system. If you had to dig 30 feet deep to get to the pipe, it's definitely less benefit. Because you, yeah. And this is just for this improvement project. I think I spread $800,000 on the main tile and $80,000 on the lateral. Turns out that pipe-wise and cost-wise, that the lateral I or lateral I is almost exactly 10% of it. So I split that as best I could, and split the engineering, and split everything else. With the grant on this, you're able to spend up to $2,666,666 and get full reimbursement, and I believe it's gonna end up right at it or slightly under it, so. And so I took a little bit lesser numbers than that in here slightly, because this is $880,000, so. Yeah, this is, I think this is realistic as far as cost to people. Cut myself off there. All righty. I'm about 2,800 acres, right? I'm about 2,800 acres. Yeah. I looked at it the other day.
Approximately.
Yeah, and the main tile itself is like 2,370.
2,371, 14.
Yeah, right close. This morning I did get information from Don Etler, who's here for Gary Nave. I have not had a chance to review it. We'll have to see if we can reach some kind of conclusion this morning, otherwise we may need to continue this hearing until this can be studied further.
What was I getting?
Huh? Yeah, what did you say? I'm sorry. I got some information from, that Don Etler has prepared for Gary Nave just a few minutes ago, in regard to this reclassification, and it explains some differences in how reclassification is done. And like I say, I haven't had a chance to study it. If we can reach some kind of conclusion while we're here, we'll do that, otherwise we'll ask the hearing to be continued until we can study this and make a response. So evidently, we're, someone's protesting what they're, or having a complaint about what they're being a reclassification. Yeah, that's how I take this, definitely. You do have the right to make adjustments on a reclassification based on your feelings of benefit. That's some of the authority you have, and that's why I say if we can reach a conclusion today, great, if we can't, we'll continue, time and race.
Well, you said we, crusties, do have?
Yes.
Okay. What are we limited by, though? I mean, obviously, we can't just pull things out of thin air and say, "That's fine," you know, because you have all the technicalities that you have to take into consideration for reclassification. We're certainly bound by certain guidelines.
Yeah, and I believe it's wide open for you, though.
Can we accept the reclassification, or is that what the protest is?
Not that I can think of. Can we accept this reclassification today? Yes. Yes, you can overrule objections and... I imagine Gary's concerns are the, that big hill that they went through. Yeah. His thoughts are probably everything that was on the north side, that hill. He didn't need to be at all. I haven't read that, so I don't know.
I'll explain it to you.
Do you want us to give us a quick version, Don?
There's such a thing as a quick version.
Oh, yes, there is.
Okay.
Make sure. Mine's right there. This is, reclass include the cost of the pond?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is a total deal.
Total deal. Total deal, everything, yes.
The people in, I didn't, while you're on this wall, just asked for lateral I or I I I I like this, lateral I, that is specifically separate from...
Yes, that's for just the cost in lateral I.
And that doesn't tie something?
That's its own deal. Thanks for the opportunity to present this for Gary. Gary came to me with his assessment schedule, and he asked me to look at it as...
Gary came to me with his assessment schedule, and he asked me to look at it as, as Fulton and Mank would classify it. This is an unusual project. Usually, you put the tile in the same direction that the surface water runs, so as you go up in the hill, it stays fairly uniform in depth up in the watershed to bring it out. Here, we're turning things around, running the tile opposite to where the surface water runs. We, my firm makes adjustments for that, and that's what, one of the arguments I presented here. There's three, three things being classified, lateral one, struck facility, the wetland at the outlet, the pond, whatever you want to call it, and then the main tile itself. There's a schedule for lateral one. Gary isn't contesting that. It drains, the drainage well on the 37, 38 acres on the west side of this farm. The, the wetland is incorporated in the schedule. Just confirmed that, I'm assuming that. And I, I would have separated that out from the tile so that we, when we look at the schedule, we can see that what is the benefit from the tile only. The wetland will have maintenance issues in the future. It would be nice to have a separate schedule for it. We, this is a fairly new area. We've only had a couple outlet, wetlands that we've included in classifications. And we base, we have based that upon, what is, the function of that wetland is to treat nitrate. And no matter where you farm in that watershed, the same amount of nitrate from your farm gets there as any other farm. So we, we have recommended assessing the wetlands uniformly per acre across the whole watershed. Some minor adjustments for roads, because roads wouldn't, don't put out the nitrate. Non-tilled soils would put out less nitrate, but otherwise, a straight, uniform spread for the wetland. And I, I'm not sure how that was considered herein. So now we look, so, but we looked at then the main tile schedule as we would classify it. And there's really an issue right up front. The main tile crosses Gary's farm, that east 100 plus acres of his farm drain north away from the rest of the watershed. It already has a tile system in it that takes his water to the same outlet. The main that's crossing this 100 acres is an outlet, it's a new outlet. When they, when they encountered his tile, they hooked it in. So you can't say it doesn't have any benefit, but there are instances, and this, this decision would have been made a year ago, where if there's little benefit from taking the tile main to the outlet, we've just left that ground off. Same, we'll pay him damages to put the tile across, but we've not assessed them anything for that limited benefit area. This isn't an option, but it's about 100, it's about 100 acres out of 130 acres of his farm that could have seen a zero on that argument. So the percentage reduction for that would be in the area 70%. Now, on the main tiles, then looking then at the schedule, what I approached, how I approached this was how we would classify the land. And I, I think I'll send you to the last map in the packet first, the big one. This, this shows parcels laying on top of the tile. And Mr. Gary Nave's ground is at the top. There's an orange line on there that separates off the east from the west, roughly 103 acres on the east side and 37.
Where'd you come up with this orange line? What, did you use that for? Because I've been out there and looked at that, and that doesn't look to me like the watershed line.
I used the LiDAR, the state elevation map. That's what I used for the line. It's, I had 38 and a half, I think Rick's schedule is 37 acres on that west side, so we're close.
I'm not talking to the west line, I'm talking to the south line where it borders the road.
Oh. The road is about the break where surface water goes north and south.
It is a break.
It is a break?
No doubt about it.
Okay.
There's one tile under the road even, I mean, it goes south, one goes north, mine goes north, and the rest goes south, no doubt about it. Right, Rick?
Yeah, that's, anything I know. Yeah, the tile wise.
Tile wise, for sure.
North of the road, it goes north, yeah. And the, the high point, the most cut was very, very close to the road, not right on the road. Okay. Just checking on that. Yep.
So on the right side of this exhibit is, the script is, the way I'm comparing what we've done with what the commission has done, is I picked the same 40 and signed it 100%. And the one I was, use here is the southeast of the northwest of 29. That's the comparison 40 for both our approach and how the commission reported it. So we put 100% on that. And then every other parcel in this group here is assigned a percentage based on the assessment that was placed on that 40. So, so if that 40 is 100%, then the one right north of it was assessed 91% of what the 100% was. And if we look at here, all the others are lower except one, and that's this one up here in the northeast of, northeast of 29, that's 109%. So the commission said that parcel had more benefit than this one. Now we, then on our, on the left side is how we assign flat percentages, and I'll, I'll explain quickly how we use factors similar to what factors, what Rick, the commission used. But we assign that 100% on that same parcel, the southeast of the northwest. And then by our comparative factor assignments and calculations, we show the one right north of it is 89, where they had 91, that's similar. But then we get up here to that one that was 109 over here, we're at 20%. And then we get on to Gary's ground, what we're calculating is substantially less than what the commission reported. And I want to go through how, how we arrived at that. Again, we're using a classification system that is, it's not GIS based, but the fundamental factors that go into it come from the generation of engineers before, before me, and these are used in many of the counties around you, the counties that we work in, this, this kind of approach. There's judgment in everything you do, but this is, this is how we apply judgment typically for the first. So my first exhibit here after my report is Exhibit A. And this is a profile of the main across the nave farm from road to road. And at the bottom, we show the 48 inch main that was put in the ground, and show it 28 feet deep at the test spot here. The tile actually gets up to 30 feet deep on, on the farm, but we show it 28 feet deep. What we do and are calculating adjustments to the assessment because of the extreme depth here, where the ground is a lot higher, the, there's no way Gary needs that tile 30 foot deep to drain his farm. That tile is 30 feet deep to drain other farms up the, up the way. So what we, how we adjust this is, are we look at what, if we just made that main 7 feet deep on Gary's farm, what size would that have to be? And in this case, it's a 33 inch versus a 48 inch. So if you look at the box here on the table, the cost of a 33 inch versus the cost of a 48 inch is a 42% reduction. So that's how we would assign adjustments to...
Where'd you come up with 7 feet?
High land. That's what, that's, that's the minimum depth that would be needed on Nave's farm to tile his farm, to get him an outlet.
With a 30 inch tile?
Yes. Yeah, that would pass the same, he don't need a 30 inch, but that would pass the same flow that this 48 does. So we're not reducing...
For comparison, you know, sake of comparison is why you do that.
Yeah, yeah. So we're just looking at what's the effect of the depth on the cost right through here. Gary doesn't need that depth. Any farm that doesn't need that depth should be, should have a reduction compared to the lands that do need that depth farther downstream. That's, that's the basis for the argument. Then the next page then shows how, then we went through this for the whole line from the outlet down to that 100% 40. And using this approach, how, if we just looked at how deep the tile needed to be for that place in the watershed, what would be the reduction by the cost comparison? Now, as we get farther down the line, it should approach 100% because the whole depth is needed down there. The depth is not needed up at the top. So we, we're looking at 40% in this end, and then we get down to the high 90s when we get down to the, the south end. Each of these factors here are assigned where, where we see them connecting into the main. And again, this is a, a desktop comparison. It's not a detailed look at where every tile connects to the, to the main, et cetera, to A review based on how we do it. So then the, the next exhibit, Exhibit C, is the way that use factor. And this is, and this is a, a fundamental difference in two, there's two camps for how assessments have been assigned in Iowa over the years. And I am, I am of the camp that, that looks at the assessment based upon how much of the tile is used. So if you, if you use the 20% of the tile at the outlet, then you aren't, shouldn't need to be assessed for the 80% of the tile that upstream from you. That's, you don't need that tile at all. But the guy that's halfway up, well, then he needs half the tile, so he should be assigned a bigger use factor. And then you get out to the end of the tile, well, then you're 100% of the need for that tile, 100% of the use. So that, that end of, that end of the district has a higher factor. For Gary, we, we assumed 20% at the beginning. That pays for the engineering, the administration, and all these classifications, all the procedures you go through. Start with 20%. Everybody has a minimum of 20% use, but then we spread the other 80% along the tile according to how much it costs until you get to the end. You'd be real near 100% at the end. In this case, we're 98% where we stopped, but up on Gary's farm, the, on this east 100 acres, the use is more like 30, 35%. And, and as you go that, through the district, it increases through section 19 and to the end. This is, this is a use factor, the other alternative would be to sign everybody who sits on the tile the same use factor. And that is not how we do it, but I do believe that's roughly how it was this commission has done it. Then soil wetness. Rick gave me, hit the factors that he uses for soil wetness this morning, and I compare them to our, what we show here, and we're, we're almost exactly the same. So we're agreeing on, on wet factor. This color coding in this map is the wet, the pothole soils, the very poorly drained soils are shaded red, and we, we put 100% on that. The commission had 90%. And for like a Nicolette soil, the commission had, I think it was 50% and, no, 60%, and we use 50%. And the Webster's, they have, the commission had 80, and we use 75 in this example. Canisfield was also the same, we're 80 for commission, 75 for us. So if we were to calculate just wet factor for all these parcels, we'd be very similar with the, with the commission. Then those wet factors are shown on Exhibit E. And it shows, so if you, the higher the number, the wetter the soil, the wettest one is 74, 76 on there. The parcel that we're using for the 100% down here, that's 74% too, so that it's one of the wetter ones. But the nave farm is drier. 57% is the highest that they have for a wet factor. So, for, so if you just looked at just wetness, it would be quite a bit lower than that 100%. So then when, when, we came up with our numbers here then, we took those, those several factors we've assigned, how much of the tile is used, how wet this, this ground is, and an adjustment for the depth of the tile, as I earlier discussed. Those are multiplied together times the area of each parcel, and that then results with what we came up here for percentage of benefit. In my opinion, and this is an unusual district again, but in my opinion, if, and I'm, I'll just look at this southeast 40 of Nave. That, that already had an outlet. It doesn't need a tile 30 feet deep, and it only uses a small portion of the main that's built. Whereas the 100% 40, its outlet is plugged, it needs a new outlet, it needs the entire depth of the tile, and it's wetter than the nave farm. So the commission has a report, for every $3 that parcel pays, this one pays 2. And to me, that's too high. If that's 3, this one shouldn't be 2. And our, our calculations show it would be more like 8 to 1 rather than 3 to 2. So you can see there's a significant difference there. In the center of the Exhibit F is a box that shows how, what we've calculated for the reduction. I think it's also summarized in our report. In the third column is the classifications that we derive from the commission's report. Assuming 100% on that 29, then Gary Nave's would be 64%, and that's shown here, and then his other parcels are also shown here. And we then show, in the, our, our classification beside it, the top one there drops from 18 to 8%. The 64 one, which we've been talking about, drops to 13. So the adjustment, reduction recommended for Gary by us would be that much for each parcel or weighted average of 20, 20, 72% reduction or assignment of 28 factor. So the classification is a, a judgment call for you. I don't like doing this, and Rick and I have very rarely been in this, this situation over, over 40 years, but I do feel there needs to be adjustments in this one. I think it was missed how that extra depth isn't needed by the farms at the top end of the district. And then that itself is a, a 58% reduction. And, uh, these other factors, particularly the use factor, uh, is just a different way we look at it. So, I guess that summarized is what I'm.
A good summary, Don. But, so, have, you've been tasked from this commission, from our trustees here, just, you know, no, no landlord contact, you, no one, no one had a concern. But we need the reclassification of this project. You would have done it, just as your good explanation?
Uh, yes, other than, and, uh, Rick talked about proximity, I, I don't have a proximity factor here, because I just looked at the parcels right on the mains, we don't, don't have an adjustment for proximity.
Right.
But yes, the approach.
You would have not buried, you greet synopsis of information, which I think you did a good job for as complicated as it is. Had we, you know, been both in May, your company, you gotta have this reclassification, you'd have done it. Well, you actually permitted.
Probably upfront, I would have not have recommended annexing those hundred acres. If you're gonna run a main thirty foot deep across the guy, who already has an outlet, don't include him, pay him damage, and leave him alone on that hundred acres. But, but with the main, this is what the approach I would have.
I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Would have been your, 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 your reclassification, uh, you know, where you looked at it, where you factored it, like you just explained to us.
Yes. And we, just this year, we had one where a tile went through a eighteen foot hill into some low ground. We adjusted back, things like.
Very interesting stuff for this project. For others, so, there is interpretation.
It would have been buried at seven.
Yeah, the code, what.
The other end wouldn't have been buried in like.
Criteria is very.
A lot of interpretation.
Yes.
I have a question on what you mentioned, on the riser.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that is, cause there's the.
That's a reason.
And so, that brings up the access point to other lab.
To a reasonable depth.
Is there anything hooked into that, as we speak?
My whole farm is patterned tile, had a twenty-four inch main, they would not have had to hit it, but the first thing they did, they hit that twenty-four inch main, if they'd have done their homework, they could have went on one side or the other. So, then they had to hook into that. I said, I don't want any tile hooked in. I got all my houses intact, it's perfect, I never will hook into this top. Well, it just got to be a fat.
Yeah, well, we'd like to avoid chains anywhere, especially.
I mean, I will never hook into it, but they had to hook into it, because they hit my tile, and it was right on grave with their tile. It wasn't under or above it, it was right to it, so they had to hook into it. I didn't want that. I didn't want to have.
You didn't need it, which you understand from you and from Don. Where's this riser thing coming to play? Is that in Gary's?
Right behind my building site. I didn't care if that was there or not.
As far as that, as far as that goes, and only at, at this point in time, there's only one landlord, and that's Gary Naev, where that riser is?
Yes.
Yes. So, I mean, outside of, for some unknown reason, the neighbor makes an arrangement with Gary to tile across his field and hook into it, there's nothing hooked into it? And Gary?
That'll never happen. But there is something hooked into it now, because they hit so many of it. You just have to see all my figures on it. You'd have to see all my patterned tiles, and they hit those, and the ditch was so deep, it was like thirty or forty feet across the ditch, so they were just gonna hook my tile together where they hit it with PVC pipe on an area that's twenty foot deep. Well, that's not gonna work. When that ground settles, that PVC pipe's gonna go down there. So, I said, that's not good enough. Put a tile up along each side of this new main, and then they hooked that into that riser, I guess. They could have hooked, they didn't like that main, that's my eight inch main, but they didn't. Or conveniently, they did use that.
They did.
That's the only thing, and I, I would, just soon they would have hooked it, because I didn't need it. I haven't made it hook into it.
Yeah, Mance, he ran two tile, two tile, wasn't it? Parallel, no, each side.
Yeah, one side, and then tap in.
Yeah.
Then he had to come back and find a couple, a couple of outlets.
I found a five inch, but I'm still dealing with it, still in the, it's not right, we're gonna have to do some repatterns, some tile on up along those goods.
After, you know, getting the review from Don, do you think our commissioners need to relook at this, Rick?
It wouldn't hurt for them to review this. You know, maybe some of these factors they'd like to use partially at least. That's why I mentioned the possibility of continuation.
Well, you know, we ain't dragging stuff out, so I have a question. If anybody figured this, per Don, really good presentation and the factoring, and he did a great job of explaining it. So, obviously, we know for this illustration, it lowers Gary's for the, you know, reasons, how much has it raised everybody else's? Do we have a sheet, um, you know, where did it change the reclassification numbers? We know, what is that, somebody?
Well, I, basic, basically on the depth issue, it'd go to the far end.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna raise something, and it was in the presentation, but, you know, we have this sheet from Rick. I'd like to see, basically, this sheet on this different method of reclassification. You know, that, is that, I mean, I think it's a fair question. We know about the lowering, and we got good explanation as to the reasoning behind it. How does that affect then, you know, were these numbers changed because of that?
If you held, we didn't, I didn't look at the whole history like the commission did. If you held everybody around there the same, uh, then you could, you could show how the dollars on those parcels were redistributed by this.
Well, cause obviously, the dollar amount's gonna stay the same, it's the redistribution of the dollars. That, I think, is, is you talk about under advisement, or, that's something you have to look at. And see how, how does, how does that factor across the affected area?
I, I like your, uh, point about the depth of the tile. You know, that is something I really never considered before, but that is a good point. The need for the depth of the tile is more advantageous to the people at the far end than it is to the people up the.
Makes sense why it's there, it has to be that deep to drain that distance.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, I don't wanna play too much devil's advocate, cause that, that part I would care.
But does that work into the proximity?
Not, not exactly, no.
Oh, depends on where the big hill is.
Yeah, yeah. If, if you try to get a realistic number for all the parcels with this method, you're really needing to follow through with another reclassification for comparison, I guess. I don't know how to, otherwise, you take the, what was the savings for Gary, thirty thousand?
About that.
About thirty thousand? And spread that over the.
Would that be per whatever factor then, across every landlord on the list of the main tiles?
Including Gary, and we'll get back on.
Right. But, would, you know what I'm saying? I mean, per all this factoring, does that refactor against, you know, back through everyone on the list that says main tile?
Yeah, you proportionally increase, you add, add that back in proportion to what the existing.
And it's not just a select group of these folks, landlords, it's everyone who gets factored accordingly.
It's underneath me.
Yes. Right?
Yes. You'd have, you'd make that thirty thousand, approximately thirty thousand, and spread that over the remaining two thousand some acres.
Right. But, you know, you don't just do that blanket, because there's factors across all that, and refiguring factors, and you probably made a pretty fair comment, and almost looks like another reclassification to do that.
What I'd recommend, I'd like to sit down with our commissioners and visit with them with this information. Because I don't, I don't like stepping on their toes too much, cause, you know, they, they, they help us all a lot.
Yes.
And there might be some things in here they never consider.
Possibly.
And then come back and look at this at a later date, and fairly soon.
Expediency is, is good?
Yeah. That's my opinion.
I have another question, Rick. Now, it just came out, located those two tile dunks. And then you had that place where contractors washed the tile, and they had to come out and repair it. But you got a bill from a local contractor for coming out there. Where's that bill gonna be paid on, that thirteen hundred dollars?
This is on one twenty-five?
On Diggies.
Oh, okay.
Someone's gonna pay for that.
If, if the subcontractor broke it, he'll pay for it. Did they bill the county for the tile repair? We didn't think they'd even done it yet.
Well, you haven't got a bill for that, but Marshall's bill's thirteen hundred dollars. Now, I told you when you first mentioned pump, I said, I got two tile, we got two tiles dumped into that area, you got to locate, yep, 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 you'll do it. Well, the whole project got done, I said, well, where's our tile at? Oh, well, we gotta look for it. Well, that should have been done earlier, now it's gonna be, you're probably gonna build the district one twenty-five for it, and it should have been in on the original, but the tile should have been found earlier and made sure it located.
It would have been billed originally, too. I mean, the locating would have been paid for, whether it was six months ago.
Yeah, but it's been in on the project. I, I would think it would have been in on the original project, finding those tiles, to make sure everything is cool.
That, yes, that would have been.
You said you were gonna do that, but you didn't do it. And the project was all done, and I said, well, where's my tile? Oh, yeah, we gotta go look for it. So, then you gotta hire this outside contractor and pay thirteen hundred dollars. I don't feel the district should have to pay that.
Well, we've been doing this now for quite a while, where we hire a, a small contractor to come out and help locate all these types of things. It's become standard practice following this. But that would have been part of a bill earlier in the project, is all it would have been.
Well, the contractor done their underground, whoever was there, should have just did it, would have been so simple. Now, we have to hire a contractor, and you're paying thirteen hundred dollars for it.
Would have been paid the same way, would have done it before after.
Yes, I, I, yes, I firmly believe it's been different.
That's what's strange.
Yeah, I, I firmly believe that. Trish is getting bills from us for exploratory on other projects as we speak.
I understand, but what I'm getting at is the contractor was there at the time, he could have done it in an hour, now you had to pay a contractor for five hours.
It would have been a lot cheaper. Earlier, probably.
To have the original contractor do it when I told you about it, what happened to here, now I have to go back.
I guess, I don't know, Marshall had much mobilization time, I don't know how he presented the bill.
He had five hours total, I don't know.
I follow precisely what you're saying. It was, should have been addressed originally, and not have to go back.
So simple.
So, yeah, and I think Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, you're asking, there's an accrued expense in that extra thirteen hundred dollars in this case, does that just get billed back to the district like the, originally, cause it, you know, should have been part of the project?
And I understand the contractor broke the tile where they traveled to the haul dirt, you know, will have to take care of that.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So, I don't know, that's a fair part.
And there was the other locating where those two tile dunks got to be kind of a job, only took an hour.
Yeah, yeah. That, it's a matter of when that expense would have occurred, whether it was early on or here at the end. I, I can't tell you what the savings would have been to have done it earlier, I'm not sure there would have been any savings. We pay for exploratory excavation, and it's typically at least two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Five hours would be twelve, thirteen hundred dollars or twelve. So, it's about the same cost we typically pay.
But you have traveled time, huh?
Well, thanks, Gary, for input on that.
So, are you, wanted to postpone this, move it back?
It's up to the board, I guess, but that's my feelings. I would like to have the commissioners look at that and maybe consider it, and, uh, visit with them again. That's my opinion.
They'd be more than willing to meet and go through this?
Well, cause it's, it's a lot of information that they've gone to great expense to give us. I think the commissioners need to look at it.
I agree.
Can't argue that. So, do we have the ability to meet with the commissioners and Rick?
Yeah, I mean, just, you just have to meet your regular meeting laws, that you have to.
Yeah, I mean, if there's more than two of us there, we have to have.
Well, and we have, there again, expediency. We don't want this to drag on.
Well, farming's just about done, so there.
So, we should be able to get, but I agree, too, there's a lot of information, and you do wanna digest it and have the commissioners look at it, and I don't argue with that.
Well, the flip side is, is you know the total is already gonna be there, so you're gonna end up pulling it from one side and giving it to another, and then we're gonna end up with someone else upset, and they're gonna be in here, so somewhere we gotta come to a mix, we gotta figure out how it's gonna be done and.
But there's a lot of information here that we need to look at.
Right, I agree.
We got a quick view from Don. How about two engineers met with the commander, two supervisors?
Works for me.
Yeah, whatever works.
So, and the reason I mention that is so that everyone is a little bit more up to speed, so it's not, Rick meets with them, then he has to report back to us, then we have to go through, we, we really want the chance to digest this, the commissioners look at it, visit about it, but we don't wanna drag that on back and forth, that we have five more meetings before we.
No, but we're already approaching the third calendar year?
Not probably.
What's that, Bruce?
I say, we're already approaching the third calendar year that this project has.
That's where the expediency, that's why I like to expedite the meeting and the, you know, looking that's over. And you mentioned two supervisors, so we don't have to go through.
I think two supervisors met with them, and that's easier to get it done.
Be more than happy to do that as soon as possible.
Two supervisors?
Yeah.
Commissioners?
And Brett Hopper.
And we have all the good information from Don. No, we are gonna utilize this information. Just, just.
Rick understands.
But, oh, yeah.
Well, this isn't fitting anybody.
Don's stuff, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want a priest or a minister there, so in case somebody gets some.
You need a motion to postpone this?
Yes.
That's all.
Second.
To, what date?
I'm gonna try and get the copy of Don's stuff to the commissioners today.
Okay.
So, they have a chance to look at it before we meet.
Give a couple extras to.
Trish has got a couple extras.
Okay, perfect.
So, we have, other than next week, you got, what, three weeks? Before the end of the year? You're gonna be gone next week, right?
I'm gonna be gone tomorrow, through this holiday season.
Through the holiday season?
No. Two Thanksgiving, seriously, two Thanksgiving. I would like to be gone.
I would, too, I'll follow you. So, do you think we could do it up until the twenty-second? Or the, that gives us, what, three weeks? Eight, the fourth, the eleventh, or the eighteen?
I wanna get in their hands today, and, like you say, they're, they gotta be close to Don farming.
So, we don't have any timeframe to meet? We've already met the, for the reclass, right?
Right, this, this continuation, so you don't.
So, we don't need a reclass, we can just, you wanna put it out? Fourth or eleven? December fourth or eleven?
But, that's, you're looking at a full board meeting, which we're not really looking at at this point.
We will, but no, this is, we're gonna meet with the commissioners before this.
Right.
We're trying to set a date to put it, bring it before the.
So, we can put it back on, back on the agenda.
Yes, yes. I would think we could meet by then.
I would think so.
Eleventh?
That gives me a whole week.
You wanna do the eleventh, and just to be safe?
That's fine.
Yeah, I, I. Eleventh, nine o'clock.
Okay, let's have a motion to that effect.
I'll make the motion, uh, the eleventh of December at nine o'clock, if that's, if your list is in the, for, that's for the reclass then? The re-reclass?
Yeah, continuation of recall.
And then let's have a motion, a second on that, I guess.
Second.
A second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
And we're gonna have to extend the completion hearing to that same date. And a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Do you need this?
The completion hearing just states whether the party that's here is actually done.
Okay, we can do that today?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect. Let's get it done today, then.
We are partial success. We are partial success.
I didn't know if we had to have that reclass done.
No, no, it's, no.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of moving that date? Did I already do that?
You already did, but you can redo it at the moment.
No, good. Okay, now we have a completion hearing for DD 125.
We can do the completion even though the reclassification's not settled?
Yeah, this is basically getting input from anybody that the project went through, looking at the final cost. And then, I think it's thirty days after this hearing that they get the final payment and they go to retain you. Yeah, they're retaining us, so.
So we need a motion on accepting the completion for 125, is that what you're after?
Yep, yeah.
I'll make a motion and we accept it then, second that.
Okay, a first and a second, any more discussion on everything's done up to snuff? According to your records, Rick? Yes, there may be some things come up yet.
Hope not.
Hope not too, but, yeah. Okay, a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, anything else? I have some drainage things that you probably got other things. We do have another thing at ten o'clock.
We have another hornet's nest we want to jump into, but after we're done, we can probably talk.
Rick, are you going to let us know when you're going to get the commissioners, you give them information?
Yes.
I would like to be involved in that.
Reminds me to.
I think I do have the knowledge and know what's going on.
Sure.
Once we get towards the end of our work session, I'll listen once I come back up to visit. Give her a fifteen minute.
Yeah, I think I'll be available.
It doesn't have to be tomorrow.
No.
It needs to be a little.
Yeah. A week after Thanksgiving, I'll be free.
We don't get cross with this week.
So for the commissioners, I'm available a week after. So next week? Okay. Excuse me, if Rick, if you get a recommendation out of the commission before the 11th, you can file it and so we can see it.
Sure.
Okay.
Are we done with drainage?
No, well, he needs to.
I think we are. We have people here, so we're going to keep it on schedule.
We got to get out of drainage now.
Got to get a motion to make it part of drainage.
Motion to get out of drainage right now?
Okay, a first.
Second.
Second by Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're out of drainage, back into your regular session, general session.
Thank you.
Rick, thanks for stirring stuff up.
I really try.
Mr. Chairman, can we have a, one second, recess.
Yes, we have a short break before we get everybody in here.
We just have a different material together.
Might send the pad around again? Are you going to send the pad around for? Oh, for the 11th.